So we're calling meeting for the 1st of March, January 13, 2025, at 6:34. We all go at 6:34.
To the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Heavenly Father, we come before you in the name of Jesus, Lord, and we're thankful for this day. I ask God, keep protecting all people that are out there driving tonight if it gets slippery. Bless this meeting, give wisdom to this board. Jesus, amen.
Okay, well, we all call.
Yeah, I know.
Roxanne, do you have a speaking here?
Tracy Donovan, my blessing.
And Kim, if you can, will call in, but he's been away from work, so we will proceed without him. So we will go through approval minutes, so we have minutes for 12:23 and minutes for 1:06. Does everybody have a chance to work with them, review them? Well, follow through on that. So we have non-public minutes from 1:09, 2025. I am going to make a motion to seal them for five years. Can I have a second on that? That's because it would, that could personally be rejected and it first, um, award number one. We'll call Roxanne, yes?
Now it's for 1:09, right?
Yeah, you don't have to worry about that. Um, say it again.
I just, I just write.
Okay. Then we have non-public minutes from tonight, 1:13. And are you going to make a motion to seal these for five years? Again, that could personally be rejected, I'm pressing on them and I'm hoping for it. Roxanne, yes?
Please, down the line.
So have you had a chance to look at the minutes from 12:23?
Yep.
Are we good with the ones given? So we'll make a motion for both at the same time?
Yep.
Are we good? So it's December 23rd and January 6th.
Two seconds.
Mike, two. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Can I have a 13 and 1:09? What about the non-pubs for 1:06?
I don't have those, those are gonna have to wait, I believe.
Okay. Okay, just double checking.
They're not being tabled till the next meeting?
Yep. Sorry, didn't mean to tie you up.
No, that's fine, I, I saw it, so glad to hear that. Then we have signature action, signature personal hold.
A couple of them, just one.
We have one one?
Yes. This is, the one on top is the one that needs to be signed on that one. For the breakdown of both.
So these are just the pay rates for, I believe, for four to five, and then for the new fire chief. And then the next item we have is municipal assessment data certificate.
Bobby, how are you explaining?
Yeah, that is a form required by the state for what they do, their equalization of the assessment value. You're testifying that the sales information in add a product is correct.
And taking your book, all this over, and we're good?
Yeah.
And you'll be good with just the three signatures on it?
Yeah.
Maybe just the majority of you all, so just so that you don't have to lose on the other.
Can't drive too. Well, that one.
Send us another one.
That one should have been signed by already.
Let's see.
Yeah, so I don't see it. It's all voided.
So we'll get into whole business. The first item here is board of selection chair position. This will be tabled until 1/27 meeting. Seems like we don't have a full board here. Is anybody okay with that?
Yep.
As well as the next item, chair advice here weekly. We'll handle that to the 27th meeting. The G I S map discussion. I'm not fully aware of what that, that's, um.
That's the C A I?
Yes. Yeah, C A I is a company. G I S is the program.
So I think, and I don't know if you guys have gotten this accepted last week, and I know you have a public discussion, but it's just a graph I put together, oh, schools using what, Strathford town? Yes, I think I did. Can I?
And just a little bit of information, just since I put that together, I talked to a couple of other towns that use C A I, and they're very happy with it. The only map side is the plus.
Right.
So, I mean, if we're gonna do something, I would suggest that we do go with C A I. I think it's more than half the towns in Stratford County are using it. And that's, it communicates with add a power, and it's very expandable.
Yes.
Rest of the systems are inferior.
Yeah, they came in and did a presentation, just let me bring it in, they came into board select meeting and did a presentation. It was, you know, their software is pretty impressive, and all the, and actually all the towns that have used, I want to say C A I.
C A I.
C A I, and some C I A. And you can give us a cost, and so we're gonna kind of maybe talk about that a little bit later, when we kind of go through the budget. So that's just.
But I just want to point out, too, that allows residents to actually go into the system.
Yeah.
Instead of just seeing tax maps now, you see tax maps, you see assessment values, you see boundary setbacks, all kinds of things.
So yeah, so if you've ever been onto like, say, Wakefield or Brookfield or Mill, you know, and you can actually drill down on the property, and you can, you know, give you the list of all the others, and it'll give you all the information and stuff. Yes, Dan?
Yeah, the meeting on the 27th, is that run by the budget committee or by the board selecting?
Board selecting.
The 20th is the budget, so next Monday night.
Oh, I set up it better.
No, they have, they have, no, it's not a meeting with us, they have a separate meeting, that's gonna be over at the community building. So you gotta pick which one you want to come to that night. So yeah, so I think it's pretty impressive as far as like, you can find out a lot of information regarding property, surrounding property and whatnot. So it is a discussion we're gonna hold a little bit later as part of our budget for next year. So that's, was it $3,000 purchase and $3,000 annually? Yeah, and then, yeah, so I think what we might look at, we'll all address it later too, is maybe like a warrant article up signed, and then eventually kind of working in going forward after that. Yeah. So discussion of replacing board select member, so obviously, you know, we had a select member step down, so we are in the process of trying to get in touch with a couple of people to come in so we can discuss, and hopefully by the next meeting, we can potentially be on the board list, I guess, I guess. Anybody have anything to add to that?
Both of them, like, they're here.
Well, right, that's the idea, is to potentially, uh, whole business, next one, high rate of hold, I guess that's you, Jimmy.
Uh.
Hey, Jimmy?
Yeah. So, that last week's meeting, um, made a proposal to buy a truck to replace the terrorist car, which, uh, as I, as of last week, it's got like $23,000 over a three year period, uh, to use the truck, said something about to my stuff. I'm not so happy with what I do that went back to the crazy oaks today, spent a little more money on it. Guess you guys heard it, more pricing, I reached out to three, um, be a Ford Chevrolet, uh, we're, uh, we're a good repair unit GM, uh, to replace it. Obviously, they can't, they're shut down, we're doing repairs, kind of makes sense. So I reached out to Quirk, um, Hilltop Chevrolet, and O'Connor, and maybe, um, the only one that actually signed the deal, I told, so. So Quirk showed that they had one, I spoke with salesman, he said they had one, um, it wasn't, uh, the problem at home, it was one or similar. But I said, you know, second quote, whoever, she agreed, yes, and decided, again, they didn't respond. Courier, Ron Courier called me today, he's a owner of, uh, assured I'd have a quote, I told him, you know, it was coming here tonight, that I have a quote an hour about jet, and, uh, never received it. So, and I'm guessing, uh, that probably the reason is, as I told you last week, that they aren't building those trucks this year, they're building their nationals in the same factory, and they're doing year to year this year, they're doing their nationals up. The guy at O'Connor, who did quote the price pretty ill, um, we would have to have that truck built, um, he said that we may build the start, um, have the truck by July, if they need to change the warranty. Well, as you know, the last truck, we did it almost three years for, which is kind of why we're going through this, because, uh, the crazy oaks said they had a truck, a Chevy, uh, two days, the truck was still available, hopefully it's yours if you decide to go that way tonight. O'Connor was actually seven, uh, like $650 more than the crazy oaks. O'Connor's large volume, do a lot of, uh, in this value work, um, and I would, I would think their price would then spot on you, and they were within less than $1,000, so that, that's where we're at.
What was, what was the price of the decrease?
The crazy oaks was, uh, $77,046. O'Connor was $77,705.
So what is your, what is your recommendation to go?
Yeah, I mean, my recommendation is to go with the crazy oak, they're, they're pretty much, uh, hard to provide, safe for, um, you know, it's, uh, yeah.
And the money?
It wouldn't really matter, to be honest, other than, you know, we take a chance if we don't buy the one that's available, which, which is red, same color as all of our trucks, so, um, rather than take a chance that they can't get some computer chips or something and, and that's what happened the last time, mostly all, you know, electrical components, COVID and all that stuff. The guy at O'Connor told me, it's, uh, it's better, it's a lot better than it was, but it's still, you know, because it's an international factory, if they decide they want to build more internationals for three months, you know, it could push it back like that. So, yeah, that's, that's basically, um, plus it's $650 cheaper to hand, it's a, it's an in-town business, um, which I personally think deserves some consideration, but.
And the money to use to purchase?
Yeah, so when we have to purchase the truck, we have, uh, we're, we're not exactly sure, uh, the, uh, the price to mount the truck with the wing and plow, no hydraulic system, was, uh, $69,000 and change, almost $70,000. So that's where we have a short, well, we're not exactly sure how much Chase is going to look, and shooting the tax as far as what's in the C R F. We think we have at least $40,000. I believe we just got a little more money from the block grant, or did we just get a check?
No.
We should, we have one coming in January, so, um, so yeah, we're, we're thinking, worst case scenario, we would have to do a warrant out of court to vote to take $25,000 from the asylum, asylum fund, and, uh, so basically, because that, you know, car guy quoted the total package was a $147,520, so that'd be like, a little under a $147,000 truck, with, uh, at worst, uh, $25,000 on the court, you know, sign, so.
But what you're looking for tonight is to go for just to purchase the truck?
Purchase the truck, which we have the money in the block grant to, uh, purchase the truck.
Would you have a question?
I'll, it'll take you to the truck, all of it.
That's, that's the, that's the truth, uh, because, uh, you know, so we'll call out there tomorrow, if you approve buying the truck, and I'll tell him to order all the stuff, whatever he doesn't have, and can I give you an answer on that, you know, a pretty good answer on it, like, next week, but generally, what, might take two months, three months?
Yeah, I mean, at best, it's probably about six weeks, uh, they do make all their own products, so they don't order push rigs and stuff like that, they have their own factory, which services all their places that they have, uh, they've got one in Louisville, they've got one up in Canada, they've got one up in West New York, and they've got the one in, uh.
The thing that I usually excuse about is like, since, you know, COVID, it was bad, bad, but.
But in the meantime, we, we're not getting rid of the other truck until the other truck is ready. Right, so no, just saying, so we're not.
Yeah, it's in use.
Yeah, so it'll be in use until the other.
By the way, today it's gonna cost, what, $15 to $2,000?
Yeah, it's a steering question.
And then, of course, you will generate some money with your comp, but, uh, because we're gonna option that truck and the other truck, uh, the O3, and whatever other this one, this stuff, we've got plenty of, we're gonna have that, you know, to try to raise a little money.
Okay, so, any other discussion?
How good with that, you've done all the research, and you got the folks that were asking them?
So, I wish I would have been able to, I don't think they were that much different, and to be honest, I reached out to Hilltop, uh, you know, we both worked in Rochester, we didn't have, oh, you know, we had a couple of bad experiences down there, but it's a new vehicle, so I think it, you know, price, but pretty good price. You know, we've always had good luck with the crazy oak, that seven trucks over there, this is the one that came from there.
So I'll entertain a motion? I'll make a motion, yeah, we purchased the truck that's something seven thousand forty-six out of the highway block grant? Any discussion? All in your favor? Hi.
Thank you.
New business. Cell phone, cell phone tower lease, so I just wanted to make everyone aware, um.
Thank you.
Well, we have a good package, so. So the town was contacted by this.
Unisign?
Unisign, I'm struggling, I'm looking at email. And they would like to, uh, buy out the cell phone tower, so it says they sent us a, they wanna buy the cell phone tower lease, um, and it expires, our expires in 2025, um, they're looking, they're saying we'd be buying it as a $235,000, $230,000 on some payment, and then at least like some reason, you know, like it would be a hundred percent tax deferred, which is, uh, long-term capital gains and such. And then revenue share, it's a 60-40 revenue share, in our favor, for any tenants added. So I'm just throwing it out there for you guys to look at, to think about, we can circle back on this at the next meeting, if, Chris, maybe you wanna look into what this potentially means, and then we can kind of, you can say yay, may, or whatnot, so, that would be great. What do we have to decide on?
Say, it's like a lease is up until 2025, so I would think sometime, sometime, they would let us know if we pass the timeframe, you know, at this point, yeah.
Next item we have is recognition of a company chief, so we would like to thank you for coming in and saving the day this year, for getting us through the last half of the year of doing what you do downstairs, and, uh, not the first time we've come back and helped out, we truly do appreciate that. Hopefully, when, you know, hopefully we won't have to land like that in the future, but we're glad to, glad to know that you're around, and you appreciate that all the time, and you put in, you know, provided the time, and, you know, can't say enough about that. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll continue to see you around town when your dogs go back down the floor, right? Yeah, you're gonna enjoy, enjoy some of that warm weather that's down there, right? And see your wife.
Boy, it's 30 up here. Warm out.
Yeah, we certainly do appreciate you, certainly coming and being able to help. So, it looks like we've fallen to the department heads, uh, I don't think we have anything on emergency management, so that's.
Other question?
I see the help hand show, yes.
Who's taking that position over? Lawyer, emergency management. And did you guys sign?
That's gotta go, that's gotta go back to the fire chief, is my understanding, he shaked his head, yes, so.
And, and did you guys sign the emergency plan from Strathford Regional Planning, so you get that, from actually do that recently?
Yes, we signed that, and then Kim was going to pass that back over on, maybe we're talking, saying different things.
I think it's the same, I'm just looking for the firm maps, of what insurance rate maps. Those should be, those will not be updated until they get that emergency plan.
Okay, so that, I know we signed that, and we were supposed to scan it back to back to whoever it was that needed the decision back, yeah? Okay, so we have not been on emergency management.
I'm absolutely, I have not had any time.
What?
Too much of emergency management.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's good. So next item, we'll just go right, fire and E M S, would you like to?
Sure.
See, that can be right in front of you.
Fire chief.
Good evening, so, uh, obviously, I've only been here a little over a week now, but I'll give you what we're working on, so we've had 12 calls for service so far this year, uh, we filled out our first ALS medical calls, um, in a matter of, matter of years, already in the last week and a half here, um, we did have one patient transported in a hospital with a trauma center, we were able to do that with our own crews, without the help from anyone else. So far this year, there's been two mutually ambulances into town, those are both prior to my start, we haven't had any mutually come in since, so we've covered all of our calls since then, ourselves. We're working through some security upgrades at the firehouse, mostly just through our medication storage, so cameras, a new locking system for the station, um, which are all gonna bring us into compliance with the federal laws on that. We are eliminating a couple of software programs that we've been using that are essentially, I like it, it was a redundancy, it's something we don't need to be paying for, so we're gonna eliminate those programs and do some of those costings to the town that way, to the tune of just over $2,500 a year. Our ambulance is operational at the paramedic level, uh, I'm paramedic, we have one other in the department, so we're able to operate at a higher level than, uh, than we have in the past. We're working through some rebranding on our ambulance, kind of, kind of starting all the pressure to our, our service and, and, uh, kind of pretty different foot forward, and build some public trust back here, so we can handle over the calls, which I think we're doing very well so far, and we have some tech split numbers, at least, that we have, building some ships. We've scheduled I O F A toll testing and hydro testing for this month, see if everything that needs to be done, so that's all we're getting. We're working through the original, we replaced the fire apparatus, Roxanne and I met against eight on that, so we're working through some, some different challenges with that, and how, how we can do that with the best value to the town. We're just inventorying equipment and stuff right now, over the last week or so, it's gonna continue for probably another month or so, so we'll get him while we can, do some, you know, planning, and know if we can forecast how many more number years, what the town needs, we're gonna be a fire company, so that we don't have any large costs, because I don't know. Well, and then our first pretty young stage coverage, we're gonna begin next week, other than just myself, so we'll have members covering at the firehouse during what's going, during the day or in the evening, this sort of budget's gonna be a little out for right now, but those are our biggest gaps in coverage, Monday through Friday, so it's gonna allow us, hopefully, over the next couple of months, to have two people at the firehouse, to staff the ambulance, essentially, um, Monday through Friday, eight hours a day, so that's, uh, that's our goal right now, and fill on that if we need to, but right now, it's been, uh, it was covered, yeah, so we can get the ambulance out of control.
What's the question? What is your name, sir?
My name's Jared Wheeler.
Oh, you weren't here last week.
Well, okay, I say the name.
Jared.
Jared.
Jared Wheeler.
Jerry Wheeler, nice to have you with us, thank you.
Yeah.
Highway Department.
Dean Phelps, PHI, uh, I P S, president, road agent, and I want to welcome both chiefs, I've already been talking to them already, and, uh, we've got a little report going, so welcome aboard. Welcome aboard, glad to have you. Okay, and I wanna thank Jim for all the footwork that he did on, uh, getting the pricing and getting this truck situation going. Um, kinda like having a, uh, you know, you're not gonna have Tom Brady sit in, in catch passes, you want him throwing passes, so. I'm not saying you're Tom Brady, but you're Tom Brady of the highway department, so.
Okay, that's so good.
Little recognition. We have to shut us a couple of ditches tomorrow, but, uh... No, but anyways, I, I do appreciate, uh, footwork that you did on that. Like you said, that truck is, is, uh, done at the Prezios. We went in, we brought it in today to try to, there was a little drip side, and uh, I brought that in to try to see where the leak was coming from, and noticed a nice trail of oil going into the garage, and the steering box, the shaft that comes out, and uh, there's a seal right there, and it was just pouring right out of it, so we ended up having to take the plow off and the wing off, so that they can get it in the shop down there. Hopefully, they'll have it back together for us before the weekend, uh, and that is one of the benefits. Uh, they do, uh, I'm not saying they drop everything, but they do put something right on it, and um, they do treat us real well there, so. Anyways, this is from December sixteenth to, through today, January thirteenth. Um, had ordered six loads of salt. Those were in, and uh, we ended up using one of our other bays that we usually put mix in, so we are stuffed to the gills with salt. Uh, we picked up some cold pads from Pike, and that will be for our potholes and such on the pavement. We were all out of that, we used up the rest of it on that catch basin on the floor here that we fixed earlier. Um, we grabbed the potholes on the dirt roads as needed. Uh, we had them looking pretty good. We got that fifty-degree weather and some rains, and we have a few potholes in the, uh, in the dirt roads right now, and hopefully, if it warms up a little bit, we have our fresh gravel down the road here, and we'll try to get those, uh, smoothed up a little bit more. They'll either be felt with gravel, or if we get some snow and some ice, they'll be smoothed with snow and ice. Um, there was a ditch line on Gary Road that was starting to run out into the road there. Uh, we went down and took care of that. Um, on twelve nineteen, we went out for a salt run, and that was at, at, in the evening. Um, twelve twenty, uh, we put up some, some mix on the roads. Um, and normally, if you'll, if you see mix, it's probably, the temperature is, is such that the salt isn't gonna work and, and stay. So normally, what we'll do is if it, if it drops down cooler, like we had the situation here, we usually try to, some mix out, and uh, just so, salt can put down, turns into a brine, stays with for a little bit, and then it'll refreeze, um, with the mix down there, that gives you that little extra grit, so. Sometimes you'll see a little different back and forth, uh, and every storm is different. Uh, so we have to, we have to make that decision after we go, and we look at several things. Temperature, oncoming, you know, what we have for weather coming and all that stuff, so there's, there's a little bit of, uh, a little bit of panic every night. Um, we replaced two hoses on a loader. Uh, we had one that, that burst, and, um, it was for the bucket release, so there's a couple of latches on the bucket. They have hydraulic hoses, one of them burst, so we replaced both of them. They were both, this is a two thousand fourteen loader, so we're talking, uh, ten years, and it's still good loader, but just a couple of hoses. Um, on twelve twenty-four, we scraped and treated all the roads. Uh, we did service the loader, we did the oil, fuel, air filters, change the oil and all that. Uh, it gets greased right early, and um, so we can put that on there. Um, we do get, when we get a chance, we wash, wash the oil to sanders and grease them. Uh, so typically, if the, if the temperatures get a little above thirty, and we have some sunshine, we'll get out there and wash them. We've already washed them three times this year, so, and it's been good down there. Um, on twelve thirty-one and one-one, treated all the paved roads. Uh, that one-one, it was one of those, uh, the next day, the kids were going back to school, the road was still wet. It was kind of one of those, you know, if you don't go out and do it, and it freezes up, you know. So, we went out and treated the roads that, that night. Uh, did three driveway permits. Two down here on Ridge Road, uh, just beyond, uh, where our salt yard is, and that's for, uh, two pieces of property, they're building tanners there. Uh, one of them's gonna need to follow, the other one doesn't need one. The other one was on Pinkham Road. Um, gentleman's planning on building in the next two years, uh, so we did that driveway permit. Uh, we had some wind the other day, or the last, last weekend, so we went out and checked all the roads for limbs and degree. Uh, then we had a spot up on King's Highway, where we have a fire there, I think it was last year or two years ago, that log cabinet goes up there. They've got a driveway that's kinda almost like a swale, you know, when the, uh, when things star out, water runs down off that mountain, comes out of the ground by the foundation, and then comes and shoots out into the road, so we took care of that. Think we've got, so the water's staying in the ditch line now, uh, we'll keep an eye on that. Hopefully, we get some more snow, and the, uh, the ditch line gets insulated by the snow, and then it won't, we won't have that situation as it is. It's been three years, every winter it's done, so far, uh, since I've been here. Um, on one-nine, we had to go out again, treated again, treated the roads with mix. Uh, one-eleven, or, uh, it was just the other day here, we had, um, that little two inches of snow. Uh, plow and treated the roads, and as I stated, um, took that terrorist out back down to, uh, the Prezios to have that repaired, so that we hopefully get that before the weekend, if there's, supposed to be some stuff coming, but we'll see, it's a little fire. Any, any questions? And that, that truck, uh, that we were talking about, um, is a little heavy-duty truck, so maybe some confusion, but it's built on the same frame as an International, so they're not built like a regular pickup truck. It's, it's a, a heavy-duty truck. Chassis is about the same, just the, the body around it's different. Basically, International and those are pretty much the same trucks, same transmission and the whole nine yards, so. Alrighty?
Uh, police?
Scott Burson, I just wanna thank Randy again, uh, since he's been back since Thursday. Uh, prior to coming back, I was able to kind of get into the, into the office and see where things were at. Uh, he's done a tremendous job, uh, in the intro, and a great asset and help that we're trying to make that transition seamless. Um, although I wasn't the chief in December, uh, the department handled forty-five incident reports, uh, ranging from welfare checks, unwanted subjects, uh, untimely death, uh, to civil paperwork service. Uh, we made two arrests, there was one motor vehicle accident in town, and twenty motor vehicle site payments. Right. Uh, as we continue, um, again, just like the fire department, it's a matter of inventorying, organizing, accounting for. Uh, been very busy the past week as far as, uh, making sure all annual documents are up to date. I'll take anything from P S D C and other state agencies that require regular updates. Uh, and on top of that, responding to calls, and, and, you know, the everyday tasks, so. We'll continue with that, it's my anticipation that there's probably a few more weeks of that. Uh, we have been able to provide coverage at least over the past week, uh, throughout seven days a week. Uh, throughout the whole entire day, hopefully, uh, I know like Friday, this Friday night, I was on until late, later in the evening. Uh, so we're trying to, trying to cover those hours as best we can in town, at least for the commute, uh, in the mornings, all the way through the commute in the evenings, uh, roughly until the traditional bedtime, you know, uh, for most people in town. So, we'll continue to do that, and, uh, and try to provide the most coverage we can at the staffing level we have, uh, to limit the, the state police response to town, uh, but state police is still covering, uh, the later hours of the night when I do as far as response to town. It's our hope, or my hope, over the next, uh, probably thirty to sixty days, or we can get that to the board here, and, uh, hopefully get some conditional offers out there to candidates from Florida. Um, a couple of quick things, I know we discussed it before, was decal of cruisers. Um, I did get an invoice today for that. Um, I received, we tried to give invoice and, uh, write in, write all the costs for the first one of the year, uh, but they sent it as a quote, not an invoice, uh, and that came back at twenty-four fifty. So, there is, uh, money in that budget. Uh, my hope that you guys are still kosher with that number, and moving forward, uh, performing that work. You're relatively quick, you guys are good with it.
So are you looking forward to it?
Yes, please.
Uh, somebody quickly move that far?
So that would be, that would be for free. Right, right now, it is far cheaper to decal the cars that don't have decals on them, so my intent is to decal car two, uh, and then decal the other two that I intend to keep, that are already decal, appealing off and, and probably are. Car one will remain undeical at this point, uh, and my reasoning behind that is that the cost for stripping and decal is significantly more than just decal it, so I think in the current budget, I will be able to decal car one at some point up the road to future year, with the issue as far as...
Um, so is there a lot to make a motion to accept that? A lot to detail that?
I'm making a motion to accept the proposed offer of twenty-four fifty, where we can read decal on these, uh, free coverage.
A second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you. Uh, and I did have one other thing real quick for you guys. Uh, I know discussions have come up in the past as far as the decal rate goes, uh, Chief Sol will, at the time, have brought it up as well. I did do some research, uh, there's a lot of communities around us that were, that were kind of doing the same thing, and again, this is third-party pay, so it's not a, it's not, or it's not an impact of the blood income or the taxpayer. Uh, what I did was I got fourteen agencies, surrounding agencies, Farmington, Bill, New Orleans, for the, uh, veterinary, human age, parents, and all, and so on and so forth. There's varying, uh, charges as far as what they charge and what they pay. Uh, what I did was I did averages of all of them. Uh, the average bill rate was one oh two ninety-six, as far as the billable rate, uh, and the average officer pay rate is sixty-five seventy-six.
What is it now?
Right now, we are billing out at eighty-eight, and the officer is eighty-five.
So what did you say, one oh two ninety-six, and did I get that right?
Sixty-five seventy-six.
Sixty-five.
So that money, as far as, as far as the bill rate and the officer rate down, I mean, the excess money there actually goes into the cruiser fund, uh, for the purchasing of cruisers down the road. Uh, I did look at that fund today, I believe, I don't know the exact number, but I believe it's around forty-three thousand, I believe.
Yeah, it sounds...
Give, give or take, uh, it's probably in that fund. So, I, I would ask the board, if you wanna have further discussion, I could absolutely do that at a later point, but I would ask the board to maybe, just for round first numbers, change the bill rate to one oh three and the pay rate to sixty-six. Uh, like I said, that's an average out of the fourteen agencies. There were fifteen agencies on here, no longer, it's incomplete, they're providing, so I can tell the way to them, I didn't have all the numbers. And again, that's third-party.
What's the pay rate?
I'm good with that, the, 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 that's our, our payers, so, so I would entertain a motion to accept those in parents. I'll make a motion to have the, um, bill rate at one oh three, and the officer payout rate at sixty-seven, call it.
At what?
Sixty-six.
Thank you, sorry.
And would that be effective immediately? The only reason I ask is we have some details coming in here and out.
Effective one thirteen twenty-twenty-five?
Sure.
Would that, so add that to that motion, please. Can we have a second?
Also.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And that's all I have for this one. Thank you.
Um, next item is the Tom clerk tax collector. So we do have an package, uh, over the month of December, we took in from Tom clerk for roughly forty-five thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars. And for tax court, we took in just over two million dollars. Yeah. Um, we have no treasuries report. We have no, I don't, right, I don't have, no coenforcement. Um, so the next item on the agenda is excess sweatshirts. What's, I'm not familiar with, I know that we have extra sweatshirts, so as, uh, as if we gave out town employees a town sweatshirt that says Tom Middleton, not just Tom, but anybody that volunteers on the committee board and whatnot. We have probably an extra fifteen, maybe twenty of those, and, um, who cares? And, uh, I think the town was looking to potentially just sell those, or maybe in conjunction work with the rest of the parks to sell those, and any additional money that we got out of that would go towards the, um, pump them in the celebration for two or three years, so. Um, we need to put a price on it, uh, circle back to the former board selected to find out what that price might be. Uh, but those will be available, and they'll be...
I can tell you right now, but, uh, so it varies by size, but we have the cost of quality, you know?
So we can sell them for... Is that with, with the decal?
Now I have the double check, I can, I'm not...
So, like, so...
I almost, I almost think if I had the smaller size of your ones, but I know the different sizes were different cost, not as far as the decal of the sweatshirt, so there would be a vary, a vary.
Alright, so, the price on that G B D, but there will be some available, and they'll be available in the, um, they'll be in the town office. Unfortunately, Ken, that's probably, um, you know. Um, or if you wanna reach out to the board of some of us, we can email, well, certainly, uh, or we can actually work with the rest of the community, uh, on that. Okay, and then we'll give it to them to sell, and give them off, I guess, so that's it. Um, I didn't have, I didn't unfortunately get, uh, this put on the agenda, but we are, and I don't think, I don't know if everybody wanna hang around this, but we do have to go through budget numbers, because we have to be able to provide the budget to the budget committee in a, within the next couple of weeks, and so that they can do their thing, and we are gonna go through some tentative warrant articles. That's gonna be probably final tonight, but we need to get through most of it, um, so, just, you know, we're gonna be doing that. That's, that's unfortunately, I didn't get it on the agenda, so that's my bad.
Did you have an empty pocket?
Oh, yes, I did, sorry. That's for you.
Thank you.
This is, I mean, we can do two, or four of them, and I think we can do this two. So, uh, before we start that, I'll, I will be public comments, so if anybody's got any questions, or if you wanna, you know, ask any questions, stay in. Do you have a town treasurer? Not at the moment, we are in the process of, we, so we just, actually, we need to post that, because we had, we posted internally. Um, we are looking to combine the town treasurer position with the police administrative assistant, so we can offer that person like up to twenty-eight, twenty-six to thirty hours versus ten hours and sixteen hours, and we're hoping that we can get a better pool of, you know, someone who can get some both, some better hours. Um, so that just, we just decided, we had to internal, internally post that last week, so that will be going up on, um... Did you have anybody apply? Uh, we did have, when it was just the treasurer. So, and now we combine it, and that will be going up... So now we combine it and that will be going up, uh, that will go on the website this week because now we, we have to save it in, we have to do it internally for a weekend now and can post an extra. We're hoping that it's, uh, you know, certainly, yeah. Thanks, no, it's a question. Thanks for reminding me, please. Yeah, any other questions or comments? No, we've combining, we're combining the positions. So we, we decided that it would probably, you know, we thought that would be an option, kind of like what we did with the administrative clerk position, be kind of because we can get more hours and it might be more viable option for a person, somebody to treasure jobs, per say eight hours a week and then at least sixteen hours a week. So we're going to attempt that route and hopefully see what comes of it, you know, we were getting, we can get a large pool of this treasure and so we can think that's possible. So. Uh, any other questions? You got a question? Oh, okay. Isn't one of them ready? That's up to you. Okay, you're good.
Logic.
Are we good here? We're going to start on, we'll start on the budget. Alright, hey. Yeah, but you can leave. You can't hit them.
The public.
Do we, do we need to be a part of the conversation?
I was asking you.
No, no, not that conversation, the outside conversation, but we're good? Okay. So we're going to start on this, on first page at the top.
So I wish I'd brought my pencil. What? My pencil.
That's alright. I, well, you'll have this, this is, uh, so we have salary and salary. So right now, I have in there as a three percent increase. So I don't know if you guys want to go through this in whichever ways, faster community or not, whatever. So we can go through it, if we have something that we have questions, we're going to bring out. So it was just, he, he, hit each line until someone has a question. Okay? So salary and salary, we, I did put in the three percent for this line this year and there was nothing last year. Um, the admin assistant, that, uh, based off of the pay rate that we need, um, the admin clerk, the same, um, office telephone, and a lot of these are contracts, so that's just based off of what I told out of what we're thinking that the contracts will need to be. Um, office supplies, thi- this will be attached to the minutes if anybody wants to see the numbers. It's just I'm not throwing the numbers out there, it's not because I don't want anybody to know, it's just I'm just doing an effort to try and keep the time they want. But this will be attached, Kim will have it attached to the minutes and there will be some, some. Um, fourth question, I can give you a coffee before, just letting you know. Um, office supplies, that I kept at thirty-five hundred. Postage, we kept that at sixty, six seven seven fifty. Background checks.
Posted, sorry, don't mean that you're.
Yep.
Posts, is that with the new contract?
That's based off of what we use. So if we might need to pull the contract, we'll have to look at that.
So it was about the new machine?
Yeah, so let's make, let's take a look at that new contract.
Okay. Sorry, didn't mean to answer that.
No, that's what this is for. So we moved that. Um, background checks, that's, I kept that at four hundred. Uh, mileage reimbursement, that remained, we kept that at two hundred. Association dues, um, that was at a thousand. And I know we went over on that, but I don't anticipate that that's going to be the case this year, but we can, we can, we can look at the detail and we'll kind of do some, but, you know. Uh, resource materials, kept at four hundred. Uh, that advertising is just a placeholder for meetings and training. Um, that one went up to seven fifty and six hundred. And I think some of this meeting and training can actually be moved, I think if we look at that, that might be able to go to a different, like a ZBA, you are planning more and all that and whatnot. So I think we need to be a little bit more about supporting that.
Okay.
Yeah, for students, that's a, that's a placeholder. Coffee here, that's two thousand seven forty-eight, that's based off of, it's a company, nature that same is one thousand nine hundred and ninety-six. Computer support, again, that's, that's on contract. Choosing town report, kept at three hundred. Now, the website, um, staying at a dollar, because I don't think that's even, that is until next year we wrap. So right now, given we will have this section for the executive is one hundred and sixty-four five thirty-three if you want. Virony, military agents, but we don't take that, postage. Right now, anybody speaking of those numbers?
Yep.
Okay. Um, next section, which is, I think, it's the town clerk that's, this is, I'm going to lose. St. Keith, something at this town meeting, we'll keep that at two hundred. Um, nothing on that election service, it's actually going to be, that's going to post to that, so, you know, that, you know. Moderator, now this is all based off of, in two elections this year that we had this year. Uh, moderator is at three hundred. Supervisors are twelve, one thousand two seventy-five. Ball corps is at two hundred. Uh, computer software, we, and this was, I think, based off of what we got from, um, assessing, I split it out, so this was, uh, four thousand two sixty. Election supplies, two hundred and fifty. The Accu-Mo machine line will go away, we're going to install a voting works machine because we got the new voting machine and, uh, that was, given us that, provided from the town clerk, that's what, fifteen hundred. Advertising, that's at two hundred. Restoration of records, thirty-seven hundred. The same workshop resources, equipment, seven fifty, that's the same mortgage research that was, yes, was likely to be something like the one thousand two fifty. Um, tax bills, they may be saying three fifty. Um, audit, so the audit was at fifteen, we spent thirty, I recommend we put in twenty up there as a small recommendation. We can certainly, this might be one, you might need to come back and, and, you know, model one, but that's just my, because I don't believe we're going to need, um, the auditing services as much as we did last year. That's the intent. Uh, so the next section, so that section right there was thirty-four, two, thirty-four thousand twelve and thirty-five. So now we're into the tax collector, so tax collector salary. Um, the tax collector had put in for a five percent increase, um, the board of select are putting in a move of three percent, is that correct? Kind of, we didn't know to talk about that.
Yeah.
But, so right now we'll just pay with the three percent. If you guys low level, no, we can come back and talk about that. Um, deputy tax collector, again, that she put in for five percent increase with board of select means are recommended forty percent. Association dues, uh, this has, uh, increased to ninety dollars and seventy-five. Records and the, records and the registry, that kept that at four hundred. Computer software, again, this is, um, two thousand six twenty-eight. Um, mileage for treasurer, kept that at two thousand. So, um, treasurer line, this one is made up of, because it takes into consideration combining it with the police assistance job and services, they start over ten hours and twenty dollars an hour and for fifty-two weeks. So that's what we, to be consistent with what we pay, that position is the police secretary on state. Um, so will that one come out of the treasurer slot?
Yes.
So we have to, in that, right, so that's why the person who can take that position is going to have to do a record keeping and the time that they do for, uh, even though the pay rate would be the same, it was, we need to be able to split it according in, in hopes. It might not be ten hours, but, you know, but, in another line that is being added, we use this year is the deputy treasurer. We've never, we've never allocated any money for deputy treasurer, even though we have deputy treasurer. So we really shouldn't have money to pay that person instead of paying the mom and daddy the treasurer's line if they didn't do, you know, they didn't, uh, make, but I think we should have money allocated there because it could be only, uh, like, you know, painful days and personal obligation potentially, so, I just kind of put in a thousand dollars in there, it's over. Um, so given that, this section is sixty dollars three fifteen. Next is the assessing, um, the assessor, which is at TARD. Their, uh, contract went up to twenty-four thousand two oh four, run eighteen two oh four, thirty-three percent increase. We have no control over that. Um, tax map update was twenty-two hundred, uh, it's two thousand. The department head got them in the twenty-two hundred, so that's what is put in with the OS. Assessing software support is nineteen twelve. And I'll just let you know, so on a lot of these support lines, it's, I had one number and I just split it up because I didn't have it for like, what, like the tax clerks want to look the assessing in, but, if you have that wrong, then I would be more than putting in the accurate numbers, but I, I kind of just did it up, I split it between the lines accordingly.
Hook your mouse? Because they give it by code on the bill, avatar.
Yeah, but then when she, but when she just gave a number on, for, told for what was next year's, next year's bill was going to be for all of it, it wasn't split up. But we can certainly do that after that.
Okay, good, yeah, because I called back and tried to ask them what they.
Okay, so that's, so we can go back and fix that, but in the end, it should still tie it up to all the software. Um, assessing dues and workshops, that is, uh, two hundred. The department head putting six hundred, I, what is left, putting as five. And we have some other lines, so that is, so this section is twenty-eight eight sixty. Any comments, questions? Town attorney, um, that was thirty-seven five, I put in for that to be decreased to twenty-seven five. We almost, we currently have spent out probably just, showing up immediately, not seeing the bill, maybe seventeen thousand dollars. So. I'd like to see that, yeah. So now we're moving to the health insurance, the admin line, so it's health insurance, we have that went from ninety-five forty-four to one oh three eight ninety-one. That's primarily all due to, um, plan change, I guess. Dental insurance, that remains same. I'm forty-four thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven. Longevity, that went from thirty-six hundred to three thousand. Uh, priest retirement, right now, this is, uh, went from seventy-two five fourteen twenty-three to seventy-four two. This, I'd like to let you know, is all formulated driven based off of the pay down below for the police, it's all based off of what we require to pay to the percentage. Um, so that's, uh, and then if somebody wants, we have that in the, it's a form, if you pull it up, I can show you, but based off of what we're required to pay to NHJ, NHS, um, for, we saw. Uh, and planning, retirement, life, this is eleven thousand, I put this up to thirteen. I believe this, what's in here is like, this is a 401K, so we have this pay increases, giving, giving a whole percent increases. And right now, we, we went over what we budgeted, so maybe thirteen's not enough right now, that's what I had in mind. Workers' comp, we are at this bill, we are at the total, from seventy-five thousand six seventy-six to eight four seven three seven. Unemployment, uh, that's, uh, seventy-four, what is that, five hundred, because we actually had a credit requirement, so we didn't actually pay it now. So this line for benefits, or if we call it, um, two hundred and eighty-four thousand one hundred and thirty dollars ninety-six. Uh, planning board, so the planning board is Stratton Regional Planning, that remains same at five thousand two seventy-five. Um, newspaper owners, just a dollar, placeholder workshops, uh, we had, there was four fifty, they wanted to keep it four fifty, they kept it, what was left in keeping it at four fifty. Um, so this is, there are lines we can use from the other to move it over here. Uh, reference material is three hundred, that remained at three hundred. Um, legal, it was seventy-five hundred. This year to date number is not right, they've only spent like a hundred and fifty, this was prior to being corrected, that's seventy-seven, that's in the, that's actually, uh, ZBA, right?
Oh, okay.
They, they're requesting twelve five. Board of Selectmen is saying seventy-five hundred. Yeah, I think that's okay, being on the planning board.
Just because everyone's legal.
Right, but I mean, so this is, you know, I mean, I think we, we use Stratton Regional for a lot of stuff that we have this year, so I think we're, I think this sounds valid fine. That's, I would, I would stick with that.
Well.
That's my recommendation. Um, ZBA, so newspaper notice is two fifty, we didn't get anything for the department head, so, uh, put that at seven fifty. Uh, workshops is three hundred, I kept that at three hundred. Uh, ZBA legal, this is three thousand. How we know that this is probably well over sixteen thousand, because it's eleven, six seventy-two, but actually the seven thousand, so probably over eighteen thousand. Um, the board of selectmen has just three thousand in here, and this, there'll be a reason why, because we're going to address that in a separate warrant article later, and this is for the upcoming year, so, um, reference material is three hundred, I kept it at three hundred. Office supplies, that's the forty-seven. So this, ZBA section was four thousand three fifty-one. The next section is electric for the salt shed, that was three hundred, we affected three hundred. The electric for the town hall, um, that was twenty-five, we paid our twenty-two, I reduced that to twenty-three fifty, I don't know if that feels right. I'll look to the, to look, keep it up. I'm trying to find as much volume that I like to have. And I'm just looking at, this is year to date, so this is out of one-six, so I think that should be the final bills that are in there. Is that correct? Kim, we've already paid all of this, we need what we paid through December, we wouldn't have any December bills to pay.
We have a street lighting that just came in.
That's down for. So this is the electric for the town hall.
Yeah.
So I'll just go through these and you guys.
I'm supposed to go now?
I think what I'm.
I was going to say.
So I, so like I said, um, so the electric for the highways at twenty-two-ten, it's expended like eighteen hundred, so I put in nineteen hundred. Um, same fire departments, twenty-two-ten, the immunity, so I threw that one up to twenty-three fifty. Uh, electric for the municipal building is seventy-five hundred, we were at seven, we said, we said, like seventy-two hundred, so I put seventy-two fifty. Cleaning, uh, thirty-nine hundred. And I know the year to date says four thousand, it's because of the way the, uh, weeks worked, you know, we don't get paid for, meaning that pay rate last year, we've got a, if you hit it fifty-two times, I think it's about fifty, it ends up to be thirty-nine hundred. Um, septic service, so this was a thousand, we paid six fifty, so put that at seven.
The planning also is another number that we won't break.
Yes, yes, actually, we're going to break that. Municipal. Police. Uh, cocaine to municipal, kept that at two hundred. Water testing, kept that at two hundred. Um, and the reason we didn't pay anything on the water testing because that happened when we had the filtration. Um, repairs for the old town hall, I kept that at two thousand. Um, new repairs for the municipal building, kept that at four thousand. Um, repairs for the fire station, kept that at fourteen hundred. Appears to highway laws, kept that at fourteen hundred. Supplies for the old town hall, I increased that from two hundred to fifty. Supplies for the municipal building, we kept that at a thousand. Generator, we kept that at a thousand. Um, so now this is, let's book this up, so building and maintenance, that's, uh, cleaning, twenty-six hundred, so that's fifty times fifty-two, so that's what that twenty-six hundred is. And then we have a maintenance facilitator, and that's, uh, just a stipend, so that is two thousand six hundred and nineteen. Heat for the old town hall, uh, so, again, this is, like, very important, so we have thirty-eight hundred allocated last year, we only used thirteen hundred, so I put that at two thousand. High heat for the highways at thirty, thirty-five, we used just over three thousand, so I put that at thirty-three hundred. Heat for the fire properties at thirty-six hundred, they used just around three, so I put that at thirty-four hundred.
There's a couple of heat in there to pay, who dated for December. There's a couple of heat in there to pay, who dated for December.
So we need to, that's why we need to, we need to pay well, but we have to look, do we pay January last year, and then get allocated back to December, I have 812 bills, I want to, we pay 12 bills, and you pay, that's what I would go on. So the heat for the municipal is 28, we spent about 28, so I put that to 3,000. So this section, that is a total of 46,610. Property liability, it's gone from 58,130 to 63,620. So now we get into the police section. The police chief salary, that's at 98,800. Full-time, department head had recommended 137,333. We had a conversation with the department chief, he wanted to see that at 140, I actually had heard a conversation with him, and given that, we probably know we're not gonna get anybody in here for five, two months, we can kinda prorate that amount, I think, so we're gonna take that 140 and hope. So what did you say, like 75%? Uh, we took that with any remarks.
I would say, if you wanna take that number by 112.
Okay, oh, right, yeah. So it's 116, so let's, 116,666, so let's go with this 117.
What was last year's number, just come to that one, right?
So police part-time, it was budgeted 15,450. Police grid gave us 16,995. Are you ready with that number? Scott, since you're here, I'll ask you.
Yeah.
So we'll keep that one at 16,995. The police overtime, that was 23,881, and the rate recommended 26,269. Are you ready with that number?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, so we'll look at that. Hong Kong K, is that 13,790, that remained at 13,790.
Yeah, I don't see us expecting it this year, but we can get staff to get it.
Police secretary, the number that's in there is, I put it 16,200, that's based off of infomercial, we did a thing of 20,16 hours, 52 weeks, 16,600. That's what I mentioned. Cell phone stipend, remaining at 600. Dunes, remaining at 3,000. Training remains at 1,500. Uniforms remain at 2,500. Chief unital forms remain at 2,500. Vehicle maintenance repairs, that's 3,000. Rate recommended 900, 9,000. We had budgeted last year 3,000. I guess my only point would be, is we do have this detail that we could potentially use, I, I'll just refer.
I will say, we need to walk the budget on that line, and I submitted a separate voice today, which we're, we're over again, like, people, for all of it.
So we went to the.
I did pull the maintenance records today as well, and those, in the fact that, in the near future, I mean, you've got to go attention, we print some of those vehicles. We can stay with that line, and think that'll work, as long as you don't have any.
Vehicle fuel, we have, this budgeted last year, tonight, last year, I guess 9,000, we give 50, 600, but again, we're not fully staffed, then we put in for 10,000, could you work with that?
I can work with that.
Thank you. Equipment, remained at 5,000. Radio repair at 250. Communications remained 1980. Office supplies remained 50. Prosecution money down to zero, public change, prosecution there. Office equipment remained 1,200. And ammunition remained at that. And so can you get your toll, because I'm not, totally not my phone.
And there is a line coming up for Stratton County Dispatch.
Oh, yeah.
Just, just so you know, I'm not sure, I believe this internet, I just found this out today, they are, and Stratton County is a, they're providing the type of shit.
Right, so, well, when we get to that one, I'll, I'll make note of what we got, what we budgeted, what we recharged, and what we put in for next year. Okay, so now we're into the EMS section. So medical supplies, so department head was 6,000, that's no change. There was a rescue training, it's 2,000, no change. EMS gear, 1,200, no change. EMS duty salary is at 9,000, that's no change. Equipment purchase, 2,000, there's no change. Vehicle maintenance, 500. And EMS trip pay was gone from 60 to 70,000, so I had a conversation with the new chief, he, given with the per diem that we're coming in, he can work with the 70,000. We will, once we go through and see the lot of the numbers, I, we, we'll put in 70 for now, and see where we land at the end of the day, because we have to have a conversation, if we have a conversation, we'll, the powers to be, so. That's that section, so given that, that would be $91,000, if that sells, same piece of the department head. Now, we're in the fire. Member expense, so budget, last year's budget was 23,000, we actually spent 27,784, department head put in for 24,561, board of select, we did a 3% increase, that'll be 23,690. The next line is the fire chief salary, that line is going away, because we have a new fire chief line, which will, is 28, which is an absorption of the old fire chief, plus the increase which covers for the end, that's the two days, so that's 28,000. Office supplies remained at 250. Cell phone, remained at 600. Building and maintenance remained 3,000. Vehicle maintenance remained at 5,500. Gasoline remained at 1,000. Bio diesel remained at 1,200. Radios and power equipments remained at 500. Uniforms is just a dollar, 800, communications, that line needs to be there. Uniforms, it was 45, department head was 4,500. I, I put 4,000, I need to find 5, I need to find some other.
Turnup gear is increased by a thousand dollars instead, so that 4,500 doesn't even buy a turnup gear.
Okay.
Just, just for real estate numbers.
I'll take any input from everybody? Do you want to keep that at 45, or do you want to? How much is all whole set?
A whole ensemble is a 5,200, for a single biopic.
So will we cut, will we split the difference to keep the 4,500, and then we can find 700,000 in the line, okay?
Yeah, just give me the number.
Well, do we anticipate having to buy turnup gear, if we get new people coming in, right? Because everybody who's there is outfitted.
Yeah, I mean, realistically, just buying gear alone has encompassed that, like, that line out for sure.
First time for something. Where are you guys at that, too? I mean, we're, 2% tax.
We can certainly.
Yeah, okay, well. Fire fighting equipment, remained at 6,000. Training for fire, we kept that at 500. Contracted services, that remained 6,000. Did you know, did you want comments about that?
Sure we are, we, we have a reduction for sure on contract services with the software that I'm eliminating, the 2,500. So that is a place that we could save money, unless we wanted to leave that, or the turnup here, short of all, so that, that's up to you folks.
I'm not gonna lie, I'm looking at the bottom line, and it's a 3% increase, when a lot of the, I mean, all previous, we're hitting really high numbers, so, I would feel comfortable going a bit above that, so, I mean, at least to get another, one other set here.
Maybe we should talk about, maybe we should talk about that in the warrant, potentially, so. Let's circle that, I mean, because we are.
I know, I know, we got a tax gap.
No, I'm just trying, trying to think of ways we can, you are, you know, so. And you talk about equipment not having, I don't wanna say implement anyway. All right, so, so, all right, so we're making, so we're good with everything that we have so far, right? So code enforcement, that's, the salary is 57,68, 3% increase, that's when we ended bringing on 41, before. Dunes, kept at 75. Workshops, kept at 200. Supplies, that, I think that at 250, it was 1,000, we spent 81, so. Code mileage, we kept that at 450. The electrical inspection salary, went from 26, we did 3% increases, from 2,600 to 2,678. Cell phones, kept that at 600, and I eliminated the software, because I believe it's being absorbed in, emergency management, I kept that 500. Stratford dispatch, so we budgeted 5,500 last year, we spent just shy of 4,000. And so if it's 10% over that, it's gonna be 44, so I budgeted it 5,500, so we should be, right? Highway, so the highway rotation is 76,44. We have a 3% increase, which is consistent with the others, so that will be 78,778,52. Overtime, 33,990, 3% offset. Highway full-time, 111,260, 3% increase is 114,580, 80. Overtime, 33,990, we went to 3% increase of 35,970. Workshops, we did, kept at 300. Gas, kept at 300, 3,000. Diesel, kept at 18,000. Vehicle repairs, we kept at 20,000. Vehicle equipment supplies, kept at 5,000. Hot top, gold catch, kept at 1,500. Culverts, remained at 3,000. Soap, remained at 41,000. Office supplies, went with a hundred dollars. Rentalled equipment, kept at 7,000. Flower boots, kept at 5,000. Signs, remained 1,200. Shop supply, we need it, went from 1,500 to 1,800. Uniforms, remained at 1,800. Highway seasonal, remains at 15,000. Highway crew, crew brewing, remains at 9,000. Safety equipment at 1,000. Calcium chloride, we need 4,000. Drug testing, increased that, increased that from 500, because we spent over 500, to 600. So I will say, highway product, what came in 2%, that's 10%. One line I think that may be true, so that total line would be 366,686,02. Next section, government, street lighting, so this was at 2,500, and through year 10, we spent like 2,361, so we need 2,400. That's what we need to say, that's the soft there. School diesel, and this I pulled off of the school budget, so that's, we get reimbursed for this, so it was 12,500, they increased it to 18,300, so I just put the, the difference in the diesel line, so 12,500, I put that to 55, the school gasoline is 2,500, oh, I actually changed that, we made it 2,800. So, but what they budgeted in there is 18,500, 2,200. Tonnage, garbage. Last year's weight, 183,000, this year is 194,400. Hazardous waste, it was 1,000, we actually pinned out 1,900, so I'll put that at 2,000. Recycle, we only pulled this as all, but we ended paying, so it may be, I don't know what we need to find out, but. We paid out five, so I put that in, 500, 500 dollars. This, that's of this government line section, which is school diesel, 2,000, possibly waste, Okay, so for the A C O, A C salary, that's just 1% of the dollar, we did put in for Chico values, we couldn't, we talked about this, 500 dollars, that stayed safe, then all the lead lines, just place hold for the dollar, being controlled, so that's 5,500 for that section. So donations, V and A, remained at 1,000. Clean reaction, remained at 1,000. Radio wave field resource, remained at 500. Milk recreation, little to recreation, actually they wanted 3,500. We made it 3,000, did we want to get 3,000 very badly?
No, they asked for 3,000 last year, it was like you said, the town meeting, probably was in that other line.
Right, they put it in the other culture, 500, so, so we put 3,500. Commander for my processes, popular convenience, we didn't do anything, actually, they did, they did ask for money. So Stratton nutrition and meals, remained 1,000. Cave environmental production, remained 500. So the total of donations is 4,000. The next section is welfare, welfare expenses, remained at 3,500. Fuel assistance at 1,500. Mileage is, remained at 100 dollars. Welfare director salary, that went from 45,24, 3% increase is 46,5972, it's 4,649. Well, welfare self, selfless is, remained at 480 dollars. Supply line is 50 dollars, place hold, so that section is 10,247. Milk home treatment, that's, it's struggling here, because we paid out the video expenses there. Beach maintenance, that's remaining at 1,200. Patriotic went from 500 to 600, and you know their culture, that's going from 5 to down to 0, because that was actually in the department, and so we got 500, and then we got now, it's in the recreation, the mission section. So that section ends up needing 1,800 dollars. So now we're into conservation, conservation expense, went from 475 to 500. Workshops remained at 100 dollars. Reference materials remained at 100. Legal fees, remained 400. Supply line is just place hold there. The labor assessment program is going to make 40 to 500. And the, as, well, the budget had, the department head had been, some of those, some of the, I don't know if that's, so, so, whatever it is, about 840, and the board of select, we had put in 500 for those two. And that's all we have to talk about, we only talk about the C R Fs down here. So, hey, look, if you think there's something that you want to change, we've gotta take a look at some of these, the new contract, the postage, think about the salary decrease, possibly, I guess we want to talk a lot about the new things. We'll quickly look at the billing for the heat and the light, you know, the electricity, to make sure that what we had in there from year-to-date can actually help those. We'll break out the cleaning, and put that, so we'll split that, we, this done with down to the police. If there's anything else on that. If we could lose anything else from that.
What was it, um, what else do you need to break out?
Most of many splits will take some money from the two for AC. Well, there's, I guarantee it.
I have it in here, and I think that I took it out, that it's on that.
We ran, I think it was two last year, the window ones. Those are pretty costly. Most of the mini splits will take some money. Definitely.
Yeah. A whole, it's a good idea. I have the warrant articles that I gave, I gave them, I gave you a copy of them two last week, so you probably don't have them in front of you. But I'll quickly run through them to give you an idea, thanks to, uh, if you're going to be, I'm trying to fill them up there, if there's anything else that you, I think of. So, we've got the first one. I'm not gonna read through it. It's the $2,000 for the road, you know, nonlasting road construction paving. That's 200,000. And these are our normal, typical, every year we do. There's a kind of 10,000 for the highway department vehicle. Uh, and these are ones that are raised through taxation. Um, there is the revaluation capital reserve. So this one, I did, do want to mention that, I think we typically were doing 10,000 on this, and the re, reevaluation capital reserve. We were doing 10,000, and actually 10,000 won't be enough to pay for the re, re-balance five years, so I increased that to 13,000. I think we will be fine if we do, you know, 213. The next one is the self-contained, meaning apparatus, is 5,000. There is the man-made disaster, which is 1,000. To then, there's the next one, which is, is Article F, which is the fire, um, fire truck that the chief wants to try and obtain this year. So we're still kind of working through some numbers, the pulmonary, where... We're talking about a chunk of rockaway, and I'm getting, these are just rock numbers, so don't, uh, 500, roughly 500,000 dollars. Um, we have 140,000 in the CRF, which can rebound to 360. Uh, I was taking a look from unassigned, I think we can pull, and I'm gonna confirm this, once I go through all of these others, maybe 150,000 from unassigned, which would leave us around 210 and 220,000 dollar balance, which I think the idea is that we would lease finance that, lease purchase that for 10 years with payment, trying to get in around 25,000, which will, if that wish passed, and see it firm numbers, that would negate like Article G, which is the 25,000 that we typically put in every year, and that is very good taxation. So, little bit of work to be done on that, um, but for some reason that failed, we would go to Article G, and we would do 25,000 to the fire department vehicle. Um, and the next one is 10,000 for the public safety complex, and the company, and the building, how long, yeah, it's 20,000. Um, 10,000, the next one is 10,000 to be added to the medical equipment reserve. Then, uh, so this one I need to get, so I need to get the numbers on what we receive from cell phone tower money, that will, the money that gets from cell phone tower to put in, which would be high with public capital reserve fund. So that one, that's why it's highlighted, so I got to know what we've collected for funds for the whole year, that you can know what that is as well. So that's one that's raised by no taxation. Um, so these next ones are all kind of proposed, and suddenly go away. Article, I'm K-ing here, so it's, uh, 23,000, so this is the purchasing of the accounting software to convert data to the common system, which would be in TSMR, I think that's what it's doing. Um, so that would come from assigned, no, 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 no amount to be raised by taxation. The next one is, uh, this is one that I've put out there, you guys can fix it if you want. Uh, I was, I put one up there to, to establish a preservation of historical records for capital reserve fund under the provisions of Article 351, for the purpose of preserving the town of mental records. Um, 15,000 to be placed in the fund, we said funds to compromise assigned, no amount to be raised by taxation, and then it's a further one for the boys starting to be, uh, as they used to expect. So, if you don't, you don't think that's what, having, you know, we can pull it off, or if we want to start with a smaller amount, I just think we have a lot of representatives to kind of get to, maybe try and get some of that digitized and kind of available online to what people can actually, that's what. Yeah, yes, and we can, yeah, because we do, like, 3,700 years, it's like one book. Uh, the next one, this is one I'm waiting for Tim, but I believe it's ZBA, they're looking for, I think it's 15,000 for legal invasion fees, that would come from unassigned funds. Um, this one I think we can change the amount on, it's to see if the town, see if the town will go to raise the appropriate some, uh, and I think this, this amount will go down to the repairs to the municipal, get rid of the Old Town Hall, because we're talking with Don Moll, who's in the front of the belch, so it'd be to the municipal building, um, but we definitely, the building is definitely, we can use us like here. But what I'm thinking is, is updating this to establish a CRF for the, for the municipal building altogether, if we don't have one. And, you know, if we didn't have the money to do the filtration system, or if we didn't have the money to do the heating, you know, somewhere else in the budget, we would be able to do that. We have no money other than repayers, like, it's like $1,000, 12, 20,000 dollars, you know, 4,000 isn't enough. So I'm gonna maybe set this up to be a new CRF, not just a one-time deal. So, um, I don't know what the amount should be, I think maybe I'll leave that there for 10,000. If you think that should be different, less more, but now, but also 10,000.
We're good for a while with everything we purchased this year.
Right, we do need to look at, I think we were talking about that, the eaves around the building, because that's all, it was never covered up, and it looks like someone's turned it down to law. Yeah, yeah. Uh, so that. The next one is potentially, I think this is initially, we were gonna put in for some like police airport or radio stations, as a, from unassigned, but we talked with Star earlier today, I think we're gonna look to do a new CRF for police equipment, and we will start that to come from unassigned, but I think we'll be gonna start at 10,000, just to put that in there, because everybody's looking at that, and it's gonna be a new CRF, not a one-time deal. Just to establish. Again, that's no taxation. The next article is one I gotta get with legal, to make sure it's, so it's accountable to not maintain, if it was identified by the same, you first apply, we have the rules class six, which is no sub, no gates allowed. I think that needs to have some wording correction, but I just wanted to placeholder. Um, am I not computing it a lot? So this one, um, I think Robin had provided us information, and based off of what information I saw, this is gonna be my recommendation, you guys certainly can make, you know, recommend something different, to see if the town will go to the priest of veterans, how really exemption limits. She provided what other area towns are doing, I took a look at that. So I had singles at 35,000, married to 50, and then the asset limit to 75,000. Can you let me know if that seems, seems reasonable?
I'm gonna have to look at it.
Yeah, no, but I just, so I'll circle back when you want to have. But, yeah.
Do they qualify 65?
Um, yeah.
But elderly?
Yeah. I mean, we, all the time, I think it does it to the vet, um, it's a credit that we don't give, all, all that.
Right, yeah.
We only get it if you have a ward.
Yeah. Just without the re-corrected, 35. So it's 30.
Oh, okay, so, I don't know which one anybody, here's a photograph. Yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll make that. But, but Robin did provide us with some documentation a couple of months ago, we don't have it yet, but we have it in the archives, I'm not bad here, because that's how I got these numbers. The next one is to increase the, so that was for veteran elderly exemption. The next one is the veteran's tax credit to 700, $750 for standard and optional veteran tax credit, increase the surviving spouse tax credit to 1,000 dollars, which I think that's kind of in line with what other towns have been doing, but again, I'll follow that up when you, um, get ones. So I think I have two that I haven't been on here that I think I'm gonna need to add. One is for the CAI, um, so I'll add, I'll come up with that one, and that would come from undersigned, and, at least. I'll double check the number of money on that one.
Yeah.
And then the other one is potentially in the truck body, which I think is around, not to say, 25K, which is unassigned. So I need to add up all my little undersign and see where that leaves me, because we do have some, um, money from the undersign that we can use to fund some of these, and that's the hope, that we can do all the ones that I've identified, and that takes, that's no, no burden on the tax care, provisional warrant articles, because we are going to be working pretty tight on the regular budget, that's what we're at. A lot to take in. Sorry.
Quite the pause, that's.
Yeah, so, because we need to get these numbers over to the budget committee, but right now they're gonna be working on the school board because they do want it sooner than us, but we do definitely. And actually, we need to post for a public hearing for the next meeting, because any warrant article, I think that's non-monetary, the board will often have to hold a public hearing for that. I'll confirm that, but I'd rather post as a public hearing, just to be unsafe. Uh, but anything that's money involved, like unassigned fund, uh, tax, you know, tax impact, that has to be come from, the budget committee's the one that has to, either gonna recommend or not recommend. They can't change our warrant, so they can only just say if they recommend it or not recommend it, but they still have to include it in when they go through with the budget numbers. Um, yeah, so that's a lot of proof to digest. And if you come up with another warrant, I'm gonna find this one, because I couldn't very well, um, so be prepared, you might want to bring lunch for town meeting, if you're paying for it. You have a lot of...
The numbers that you were looking at.
I have a lot of warrant articles.
The numbers that you were looking at, of like...
Hopefully it's all there.
Get now, keep being paid.
And that's it, that's all I have. Anybody?
Ian Burns is one of them, that's one. Yeah, that's the one that you pre-ordered, it's actually, only covers the...
Do you want to share?
Oh, she was just telling me the, the break going for the cleaning lady.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I have a conversation with you after this, we got it. Uh, so, if nothing else, questions, comments, and still, and there was six people, that is, um, any comments, questions, suggestions, recommendations? Well, with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, prepare it at 8:15.
8:16.
8:15. Any discussion on that? All those favorite?
Aye.